So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we can do roll call. We've got Trustee Gail on the Zoom because he got stuck in Helena. Otherwise, everyone is here. So that's excellent. And tonight's our budget meeting, so that's the one thing we have to get done tonight. So let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, and now on item three, it's an opportunity to review, revise, or approve the agenda. I know Dr. Watson hasn't revisioned. Any of the trustees have a revision to the agenda? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lorenzen. I am requesting that the trustees move two items off of tonight's agenda and move them to the next meeting. And the two items that I'm going to recommend are second readings of Policy 3150 and Policy 3510. So if you look at your agenda, it's six old business, item A, subtopic two and three. And I'd like to explain to you why I'm requesting this. You'll recall at the first reading of these policies, the board made some pretty good suggestions to both of these policies as recommended changes. The very next day after that January, our July 20th board meeting, I made those recommended changes and we posted those revised policies to the website. But when we put the agenda packet together today, we still had the first version of the policy. We didn't put the most updated version of the policy in the agenda packet. So just out of an abundance of caution around this and not wanting to have to redo these things another time for another reading, I just would like to postpone those two. Next time we put the packet together, we'll get the right policies in the packet. We'll leave them posted on our website for public comment between now and the next meeting.
Okay, unless there's any objection, we'll go ahead with that change to the agenda. Okay, moving on to item four, public comment. I don't think we have members of the public present. And the only online presence is Trustee Gail because he's a special case. Any correspondence is in your packet. So then item five is announcements from the superintendent.
Okay, so I've got a couple of exciting things to talk about this evening and then just a couple of reports. So our first day of school is August 30th. It's quickly approaching. We're getting excited for the first day. I wanted to mention also that this last Monday, we hosted our new teachers. And that's probably not broad enough definition. It really included teachers, counselors, behavior interventionists, school psychologists, librarians, all those folks that are new to the district. We host them for a couple of days for some orientation and training. We had nearly 100 between K-5 and 612, which is just amazing that we had that many and that we were able to fill all of those positions. A lot of qualified folks. I think what was most encouraging for me during the K-5 session, I asked for any new teacher to stand up if they were a product of Missoula County Public Schools. And there was about a third of them that stood up. So that was really encouraging to see that they're coming back to teach our next generation. But I wanted you to know that we have an outstanding new teacher mentoring program. The board has heard about that before. We're going to bolster it a little bit this year with some ESER funds because we have so many new teachers. So we'll be adding another staff member to help those new teachers. Not only do they help the new teachers in the first year, but they also help the new teachers in their second and third year. We know that retaining teachers, retaining high-quality teachers is really top priority for us. And it's shown time and time again in school districts across the country that if you have a really strong induction program and mentoring program, teachers feel supported in those first few years and they're more likely to stick around. So just wanted to report on that. A couple of other things that I wanted to tell you about this, not this weekend, but next weekend, Saturday, August 28th, from 9:00 to 2:00, Jefferson School is hosting a workday for their playground. They have a bunch of volunteers from Missoula Elks Lodge that will be there. And I'm going to try to be there for at least a big part of it. They're just doing some cleanup and some renovations to the playground. Some of the money's been donated, some of the money we chipped in from the district. But it's a workday for that playground from 9:00 to 2:00. And I can send this email to the board. There's some items they want you to bring if you're able to come. But it's just a great opportunity to support that school and their mission and everything they do at Jefferson. Let's see. Briefly also, I wanted to give you an enrollment update. We don't have any firm enrollment numbers right now. And probably the biggest reason why is because our school secretaries really just came back at the start of this week. And so one of the things they do as soon as they get back in the office is they sort of clean up the enrollment status. So as students have left our community and moved to other communities, typically, once they enroll in a new school, they send a records request. And once they do that, we know that the student is officially gone. So we don't know how many students have actually left. We do know we have a lot of students that have turned in enrollment paperwork to enroll in schools. So we feel pretty good about our enrollment that it's looking pretty good in terms of the number of students that have turned stuff in to be enrolled. But until we can level that out, decide how many have left and how many are coming in, we just won't know that. Our official enrollment count date is the first week of October. But I'll be able to give you updates before then to kind of let you know where we're at and how much our enrollment has grown or if it's stayed pretty steady. We do know that at some schools and at some grade levels, we're pretty full. We have a leveling process where if a student shows up late in the summer and their school and their grade level is full, that they're asked to go to a different school, a neighborhood school close by. But we'll have to use that process this year for some grade levels at certain schools. But I would want the, you know, the public to know that we have space for everybody. We make sure that we have a spot for them, no matter where they're living in town, we'll find a spot. And then the only other thing I would tell you is that probably the biggest unknown that we're all still kind of wondering about is that kindergarten enrollment. You recall last year, I reported to you about, we had about 80 kindergarteners that sort of delayed their enrollment. In a sense, they didn't show up for kindergarten because of COVID. We don't know if that's going to happen this year. It's just so hard to tell and there's so many moving parts and just so many unknowns at this point. We hope that that doesn't happen, but we might have another crop of kindergarteners that delay that first year. But our numbers are looking good in all of our kindergarten classes. We feel like they're getting full. The last thing I would just mention is the MOA. I know we've been tracking that pretty closely, too. I think the last time I reported to you, we had about 200 kids in the online academy or 212, I think we were at. Right now, we're at about 230. So there's a few kids that decided to come into the MOA, but it's pretty close to where it was last time. We'll have to watch those numbers as well and see if they go up or down. Pat's going to talk about the budget tonight. And, you know, a big chunk of our budget is based on last year's enrollment. I've been reporting this to you quite frequently, but at K-5, our enrollment, or K-8, our enrollment was down about 300 students. So this coming year's budget is based on the fact that we were down 300 last year. I would tell you, that's a similar story that I've heard from every AA superintendent I've spoken to about that drop. I think Billings was even worse. They probably had 500 or 600 student drop, but it's a larger school district as well. So we obviously are hoping that we'll see that enrollment rebound. And by the first week of October, we'll know that for sure and be able to report those numbers to you. So that was my superintendent report. Sorry, just a little bit lengthy.
Thank you. Are there any trustee questions for Dr. Watson, Cohen?
What's your best guess as to where those kids went, those 300?
Well, we know for sure that there was an uptick in homeschool enrollment. That we get updated monthly from our county superintendent regarding homeschool numbers. Throughout the last fall, we were seeing an uptick in homeschool numbers. I think some other kids went to some private schools in town. There's not very many districts that have open enrollment, like Target Range used to have an open enrollment, but they're trying to tone that down a little bit. So I don't think a lot of kids went to other districts unless they went to a private school.
Trustee Decker?
I'm just curious about the grade level breakdown in the current enrollment for the MOA and how you'll group kids effectively with smaller numbers.
Yeah, Russ might be the best person to answer that. We do have some unique situations in MOA, but we overstaffed it, quite frankly. Like at sixth, seventh, and eighth, we probably could have, you know, combined grade levels, but we didn't do that. We tried to staff it appropriately.
You know, I just might add that we've got one grade level where it's a combination class, third, fourth. But we're getting more kids all the time, so we'll see how that shakes out another week, whether we want to add another teacher there. That's a possibility as we figure out this enrollment thing. But overall, our sizes for each individual class in the MOA, especially in K-5, are really nice numbers. Kindergarten is down, but first grade is up. So we're sitting pretty good, about 80, about 95 high school kids, 80-some middle school kids. So it's well-staffed. We've got electives, we've got special ed. We're well ahead where we were last year as we're putting together quickly. So we feel pretty good about it.
I also forgot to mention one other thing. Russ reminded me that we do have some out-of-district students that have requested to come into the district. We've put those students on hold, quite frankly, because we need to see how the numbers shake out to make sure we have enough room in our schools for the students that live in our district. But I think that we're in the neighborhood of maybe 20 students from outside the district, K-12, that are interested in coming into the district.
And just to add that, I told people that we're going to wait till right around Labor Day, a little before, a little after, to see where we're at for sure. And then we'll sit down and make a decision. Out-of-district would also imply tuition as well. So that's about where we're at with that crowd as well.
Are there any other questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, I will move on to agenda item six, old business. The first item in old business is to approve the second reading of revised Board Policy 3121, enrollment and attendance records, and that's on page six of your packet. Rob?
Yes, so just a reminder to the board, the major changes in this policy were the addition of a section in the policy that allows for enrollment for purposes of participation in extracurricular activities by an unenrolled child. So in state law last year, they changed the rules around participation in extracurricular activities. And they're now allowing students that are either homeschool students or private school students that, or I should say, non-public school students who don't have the activity at their school, they could participate in the activity at our school in the district. We also receive a small portion of A and B money for those kids that do participate in extracurricular activities. That's the biggest change for 3121. It was necessary to put that in there just to have that allowance in policy. We did not receive any public comment on that policy.
Are there any trustee questions? I guess it's not a question, but if you could reiterate that they must live in the district and they must play sports at their homeschool if they were at school?
Yeah, we've chatted about that a few times with our ADs, and that's been pretty clear. Number one, they have to live in the district. Number two, they can only participate in the school where they reside.
Trustee Decker?
And this may be really obvious, but obviously, I think, students that would be homeschooled but participating in our extracurricular activities would be following all of our policies, all of, everything about being an MCPS student would apply to that participation.
Yes, right down to the requirement of a physical at high school. They have to have a physical before they can compete or participate, have to pay the participation fee. If it's a cut sport at high school, they have to go through the tryouts, just like any other student, in order to make the team. And then probably the one piece of it that's a little bit gray at this point is, as you're well aware, our high school students that participate in extracurricular activities have to maintain a certain GPA to continue each semester. But if you're a homeschool student, there's really no way for us to verify that. So the way the policy, the other policies was written on this was that whoever the teacher of record is could verify their academic record to our ADs.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee McDonald?
So in extracurricular activities, would that fall along with like drama and band?
Yeah, so I'm really glad you asked that question. Actually, the bottom of page seven defines what they mean by extracurricular activity. And this is, it's pretty broad, but basically, any sport or activity that's sanctioned by an organization having jurisdiction. So the example I always use is robotics club. People wouldn't necessarily think of that as an extracurricular activity, but robotics club is a sanctioned organization and because they compete in competitions outside of the district. So technically, robotics club would fit that definition. The theater one is, they actually spelled that out in state law, and I'm not quite sure why, but Part C says a theater production. So that's considered an extracurricular activity. So they define what an extracurricular activity is right there in the policy.
And so does, those are going to be going on this year? They're going to be able to participate in those?
Yeah, we'll still have some COVID precautions and mitigation strategies, but we anticipate having regular activities this year.
Okay, another one, sorry. So if a student has, is doing, you know, the home teaching and such, are they still able to participate in the, like in drama and band and stuff like that?
Yeah, so I don't know if this is answering your question, but if they're an MOA student, they can participate. If they're on the online academy, they can participate in our activities. This policy and the new state law allows a student that's homeschooled, you know, maybe getting a tutoring outside of school at home, to participate as well.
Thank you.
I guess, so things like choir, band, orchestra, and maybe even theater, they're actually classes at school. So would these kids need to be enrolled in those classes in order to participate?
We're really getting into the weeds here. This is supposed to be like a two-minute superintendent report, so. These are really great questions, and these are questions we have been struggling with a little bit. But let me give you a great example. At the high schools, you have a special choir that you have to try out for, and it's a sort of a traveling choir. The one over here is called the Spartaniers, but it's a specific choir that's like a tryout choir. In order to do that after-school choir, you also have to be co-enrolled in a choir during the school day. So that's a district requirement. So if a student come in and came in, a homeschool student came in and said, "I just want to do the after-school choir," we would say, "No." In order to do that, you also have to be enrolled in the school day choir as well.
Any other questions? Okay. So the administration recommends that trustees adopt the revised Board Policy 3121, enrollment and attendance records. Do we have a motion? Moved by Trustee Wake, second by Trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the motion? So seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your And that's unanimous as all trustees present. So we removed the next two items of old business, and now we're into new business, which is the fiscal year 2022 Montana School Board Association Guidelines and Dues estimate. And then at the end, they're going to, I think the recommendation is going to be that we up our membership. Is that correct?
Yeah, Pat can talk about it.
Okay, and Trustee Wake as well is very active in that organization. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So this is a request from the School Boards Association for the membership, including our board, to vote on a few items that they presented to the annual meeting in June but didn't have a quorum. The items are listed in the background section of the agenda, including the Principles and Guidelines and Annual Item, the Dues Revenue Estimate, which does bear upon our dues, and then the nominations for president-elect and for vice president. All of the election items came as seconded motions from the board, as did the Dues and Revenue Estimate. I'll maybe just talk briefly about the Revenue Estimate for the Dues. This is for FY '23, so it's not for this budget year, but for next. And the way the bylaws read for MTSBA, they utilize the expenditures from three years previous of all the school districts to help calculate their revenues. And what they look at is the change in expenditures from one year to the next. So here, they looked at from 19 to 20, and the revenue or expenditures increased by So the impact of that is to modify the due schedule based upon those expenditures. And for us, as a large district, we're in the flat rate category. First, I'd point out that the dues makeup, or the dues increase proposed here is $20,000. And for MTSBA, represents 21% of their revenue is from dues. So the bulk of it is not dues-based. For us, the increase would be $331 from FY '22 to FY '23. There are a number of explanatory pieces to the memo that's attached to the agenda. And those were sort of the highlights that I saw. And I'd be happy to talk more about the benefits and value of MTSBA. But it seems that some of the requests are really unrelated to the Revenue Estimate than the Dues, which I didn't have anything additional to add.
Okay, do trustees have any questions for Pat about the MTSBA? It looks like the recommendation is simply to approve these items. We actually already voted to pay our dues this year. Anne, do you want to add anything?
This is for 2023, not for this year.
But we're not voting to pay them, we're only voting?
No, we're only voting that what we agree.
Okay. No, that's okay. Go ahead, turn your hand.
Basically, you're voting for them. You're saying that yes, you agree with the fact that this is what our dues will be in the year 2023 when we get our bill from them.
Okay, and we also have proposed Principles and Guidelines?
Those are basically done on a regular basis through MTSBA. If you notice in the language, it says must. That means that MTSBA must do these things. And it says shall, which is a guidance for other districts to use these as a guidance if they so choose, but they don't have to. So that's basically what that is. And the other two are officers that were elected.
Okay, do you think we can do all this in a single motion?
Yes.
Okay, are there any more trustee questions on this item? Anne, would you like to make a motion, please?
I'll move that we accept the four proposals from MTSBA.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, you didn't hear? Can?
I'm sorry. I forget to turn it on. I said that I would propose that we do the four proposals for MTSBA.
Is there a second? Second by Trustee McDonald. Any board discussion on the motion? Okay, any public comment on the motion? So all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present. Thanks, Anne. Our second item under new business is to adopt the 2021 Elementary Budget. This will be an elementary action item. Go ahead, Pat, if you want to tell us about it.
All right, thank you. So as referenced in the background section, this is the time and place for the board to meet, which it's required to do before August 20th, to adopt final budgets and set amounts to be raised by taxes. The background for both the elementary and the high school provides some various highlights and also references the attachments that we previewed last board meeting last week, but we'll go through in a little more detail tonight. First, if you jump to page 27, this item represents the budget adoption motion, and it identifies the final budget amounts along with the levy amounts that are attached to those budgets. The only thing I'll point out with this spreadsheet for the moment is that the budget in the elementary is, total budget is going down 1.2 million, and then the total levy amount compared to last year is going down about 660,000. And we can sort of dive into the details as we progress. On page 28, you'll see the resolution. This is the resolution just indicating that the board has approved the budget and then the amounts to be raised by taxes. The page 29 is the certificate of the resolution that I would sign as the district clerk. We published a notice of the meeting tonight with the county superintendent's office, through the county superintendent's office, along with other districts. And we represented in that publication that the meeting would be with the intent to raise taxes. And at the time, you know, we weren't sure where we would stand. And obviously, we're not increasing taxes, but that is what the notice said, and that's what the certificate here says. Page 30 is where I wanted to talk a little bit more. And page 30, when we put this in the packet last weekend, or last week, didn't have estimates for 2022. And so now they're obviously included here. And this, for each of the budgeted items, we can see some important information. And so the general fund, first of all, is, the proposed budget here is based upon the state law calculation, where we're obligated to adopt base budget but no more than a maximum budget. And here, we're not adopting a maximum budget. We're essentially adopting a prior-year budget. And then the levy amount is reflected there, as well as the decrease in the levy at 363,000. From a local standpoint, the budget itself, as mentioned before, went down 642,000. We could have run an $810,000 operating levy, which would have, state law allows us to adopt prior-year budgets plus inflationary increases to our funding components. We, as a board, as a school district, chose not to do so in light of the particular impacts of COVID. And as such, we're seeing this drop in the budget. The corresponding additional information is the decline in mills, 11.89, and then the tax impact in the general fund is a reduction of $32.11. Then you'll, the transportation fund, this fund is used to transport, to cover the costs of to-and-from transportation. And the expenditure, primary expenditure in this budget is our obligation to beach, to perform those services. We also cover some portion of principal salaries, given their involvement in the transportation services at their school buildings, along with some smaller salary that are attendant to crossing guards at certain locations and bus aides on certain buses. You'll see here that the levy proposed would also involve a decrease here, 140,000. The budget itself is going down by 219,000. And again, there's a reduction in mills and a tax reduction. The tuition fund is primarily made up of the excess special ed costs that we permissively levy to cover our special ed students who have expenditures in excess of the state reimbursement per student. And there's no change here in this levy amount. The decrease is by virtue of the fact that we're able to reallocate some of the budget that we had at the end of the year. And again, there's a reduction in mills and taxes here. The retirement fund is expenditures that are related to our staffing. There's no levy reference because it's a county-wide levy. The primary expenditure here is for payments to the retirement systems, to TRS and PERS. And for TRS, the employer contribution is 8.6% on PERS and 9.27% for TRS. two seven percent for TRS. Those are the, the big ones, along with FICA and unemployment insurance. The, that fund also, or that budget also was reduced. And the primary reason there is there was staffing that were typically paid out of the general fund, and staffing costs within the general fund are covered by this retirement fund. But if we pay for some staffing with federal dollars, the federal funds also pick up these fringe benef, the fringe obligations, including the retirement contribution. So that's part of the reason for some budgetary reduction there. Adult ed on the elementary side is for literacy services for, for parents and families. It's, services are performed in all the K eights, as well as at the lifelong learning center. It's not a very big budget as compared to the, the, the high school side, but there are services here as well. Technology fund, this fund went down twenty-five thousand dollars. This, this purpose of this fund is primarily to purchase equipment, cover software purchases, as well as some staffing costs. You'll see the levy of eight hundred and fifty thousand, that's a voted levy. And overall, there's just a small reduction in mills that are primarily related to the change in tax valuation. Debt service, this is again our bond service of the, the bonds that we passed in two thousand fifteen. We'll continue to see a reduction in the debt service as we pay those bonds down. We set budgets based upon our needs for debt service on an annual basis, as well as any SIDs that we have. And then finally, the billing reserve, the, the levy amount reflects our proposed permissive levy. This is, was discussed back in March, as, as well as some other times. And the budget is based upon that permissive levy, as well as state funding we get because we have a permissive levy for this purpose. So overall, the, as mentioned, the budgets went down one point two million. There's a reduction in mills of twenty-three point one seven, which is, which is pretty high. And then the tax impact of a reduction of sixty-two point five six. And we just based that on a two hundred thousand dollar assessed value home. You can multiply it by multiples for different valued homes, but, but for instance, you can reduce it in half to come up with a hundred thousand dollar assessed value home. And that is always going to mention about that spreadsheet. And kind of in line with that one is, is really a look at the, the next page, which is thirty-one. And what I want to point out here, the top half is the elementary mills. And you'll see that the, the, the gray line is for all of our, these budgeted funds except for the debt service. And the bar on the left is, is used to identify the, the mills for, for the budgeted funds other than the debt service. It, it's a little bit misleading because the debt service mills are on the right side. And so those mills are not as high as these ones, but, but you, you can look on the right side and see the, the, the values that are used for, for the debt service mills. And not surprisingly, looking over this pretty extensive period of time, the debt service mills, we had paid all our debt off for a number of years before we passed the bonds in two thousand fifteen and did our first issue in two thousand sixteen and our second issue in two thousand seventeen. And then as we've paid those, those debts off, surprisingly, this is, it's five years now that we've been into it, or actually six. You can see that graph just, just nose diving, and that, that'll continue to do so. These are twenty-year bonds, so we're about a quarter, we're a quarter of the way through. The other thing to note on this graph is just the, how flat the, the mills are for all of the other budgeted funds. We, we budget to a dollar amount, and then we determine the number of mills. So we don't have a set number of mills that goes up and down with the change in tax valuation. And that's an important thing to note because most of these budgeted, budgets that we're setting are based upon very specific calculations. And the general fund in particular, it's tied to enrollment, it's very specific. And that's our largest budgeted fund. The other ones are also tied to very similar, to, to calculations, not similar calculations, but to calculations. And they don't go up and down just based upon tax valuation. The amount of mills are affected by tax valuation, but it's, it's not something that dictates our funding levels. Hopefully that, that makes sense. If, and I'm just going to keep rolling and then I can answer questions at the end. Page thirty-two, we've looked at quite a bit. This is our general fund, real thirty-thousand-foot view of our projections. And, and only a couple of things to point out, because there hasn't been many changes here. But the elementary, as mentioned, we're adopting a budget that's less than the prior year budget, which is, is unusual, but not so under the circumstances. And then the voted levy that didn't take place would have been eight hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifty-one, if we were to go to, to the highest budget we could use without a vote, or with a vote. And then beyond that, we factor in some savings for retirement, we build in staffing obligations. And, and as mentioned last time, we're adding some additional obligations that are inflationary in nature for our SROs, insurance, and some of, some of the additional staffing type obligations we're, we're adding. The, the FTE that's added is three, that's listed under salaries and benefits. The inter-local fund support, it's, it's a positive because that was some support for the high school that we don't have to, to put at play this year, so that's a, that's a savings. And then our net deficit to be picked up by ESER funds that will cover the cost to maintain operations and to keep, keep folks employed. The, the next sheet on page thirty-three is, is revenue associated with, with our general fund. And there's, there's one minor change here that affects three lines in a, in a small way, and, and for both elementary and high schools. So the, if you look at the non-levy revenue, it's about four lines down. And it's, for this year, it's projected, estimated at sixty thousand. This amount represents the interest earnings that we recognize within our base budget. And what it does is our interest earnings offsets what we locally levy as, as the base levy. And the base levy change also affects guaranteed tax base. So the actual interest earnings that we could report to the state was sixteen thousand two sixty-eight and not sixty thousand. So that, that change then had the, it's a forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollar change, meant that funding from the base, and that's the local levy, would go up thirteen thousand four ninety-seven, and from the state in, in the form of guaranteed tax base aid would go up thirty thousand two thirty-five. The bottom numbers stay exactly the same, it's just among those three categories, there's that, that slight change. Near the bottom there, we're showing the change in A and B, and you can see the, to underscore what, what Dr. Watson was talking about earlier, we show an A and B change in K-six of a hundred and thirty-two, and then in seven, eight of forty-nine. That's the three-year A and B averaging impact. The real actual change in A and B was three seventy-eight. That was three hundred and twenty-two A and B, that's students in K-six and fifty-six and, and seven-eight. So there was a, a pretty sizable change in enrollment that had this, this, this impact. And I have copies of this sheet with the revised numbers that you can, I can share with you at the, the end of the meeting. But that's what I had to share on the elementary side. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any trustee questions for Pat? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. Thanks. I, I'm feeling this year, like you've really sort of baby-stepped us along by sharing lots of deeper dives into many of these pieces along the way. So thanks as always for that, always appreciated. I'm curious if you could just, this, this is our budget that we are looking at adopting, looking at adopting the general fund and all of these specifics. And of course, there's lots of other pieces of funding that come into the district to support all of the various programs that we run and operate. And I'm wondering if you could just, if you don't mind, give like a quick little Cliff Notes on what some of those other funding streams are that people hear about, and like why that doesn't appear on this particular budget adoption? Because of course, it's all part of our budget writ large, but the budget we adopt in this particular moment doesn't reflect, you know, things like title and all that.
Thank you, trustee Decker. It's a, it's a great point. The, the grants are not built into any budgets that we adopt. And so the most significant grants we receive are federal grants, and they're in the form of our title grants, as, as you indicated, primarily our Title I grant. And the Title I program serves our low-income schools based upon a free and reduced population in those schools. And, and it's a, it's a sizable grant, both in the elementary and the high school. In the elementary, we have, we have Lowell, Franklin, Hawthorne, and Russell, and CS Porter is our Title I schools, and then Cady Swan and Big Sky in the high school is our Title I schools. So they receive additional funding that's intended to supplement district programs and support at-risk students based upon that population in those schools. We have other title and other grant funds, you know, the largest of which is, is the, of course, the ESER funds that are, have been rolling out in ESER one, two, and three, as well as the, the CRF funds that were issued through the, through the state. And I think what Dr. Watson and I have in mind is to sort of do some recaps of, of, and plan budget expenditures for those, for those ESER grants for the board, sort of build upon what we had shared before with the CARES Act and the CRF funds. We have other grants that are in the form of, you know, small ones that are donation-type, also donations, but we have the MEF grants, the one student at a time, or the one, one, help me out here, the.
One class.
One class at a time, thanks. And there are thousand-dollar grants. We have a, a number of larger grants, the Twenty-First Century Grant, that also within these budgeted funds, there is one grant, I, I didn't mention, that under the Flex Fund, we have an opportunity grant that was distributed through, through the state, and they ran it through the Flex Fund, which we had never used before. But that, the intent of those funds from the state are to provide fees for students to offset costs of participation in CTE programs and other programs, purely to, to cover fees. Yeah, so the Fund Fifteen is a non-budgeted, non-levy fund that, that, that houses all these grants and all these title programs and all these donations. And it's a, it, it's a, an area that a, a number of our administrators are involved with directly, Amy Shattuck in, in particular, with our federal grants program, and then Elise with a number of these other grants. So they, they're the, the point of contact and the, and the main person that are monitoring and administering those grants. Perkins is another one that I, I forgot to mention. That's a, another large one, that's a CTE-type-based funding stream from the federal government. So all those grants, many of which are federal programs, require certain compliance requirements as, as, as most federal programs do. Does that help?
Yeah, that's fantastic, thanks.
Are there any other trustee questions for Pat? We're not information-only anywhere, are we? So is there any trustee, or, well, we need a motion first. The administration recommends trustees approve adoption of all twenty-one, twenty-two elementary budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by taxes as presented on the attached motion and resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash two E. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Elperson? Second by trustee Hobbins? Is there any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trust, elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising their hands. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Our next agenda item is the high school budgets. Again, Pat, can you present?
Yes, thank you. So I'll, I'll just point out, on page thirty-four, we have the, the similar adoption motion that summarizes our final budgets and levy amounts for each of the budgeted funds. The budget decline in the high school was, was less, is eighteen thousand, reduction in the, in the total funds. And the levy amount reduced by two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And, and so just, just looking, jumping forward to page thirty-five, this is a similar resolution, and thirty-six is a similar certificate as, as with the elementary. And then there's, there's really a lot of the detail on page thirty-seven. And without describing the purposes of these various budgeted funds, I'll just point out that the general fund increased in the high school, and, and despite a thirteen A and B reduction, the inflationary increase helped support a, an increase of budget in the general fund there. But overall, the levy is, is a decrease, so that even though the budget increased, it wasn't, didn't locally affect our taxpayers. In fact, there's a four-point-seven mil reduction for local taxpayers. The transportation fund is, is virtually unchanged with a budget adoption of two million four twenty-nine, and that's a, a reduction in that fund of a hundred and ten thousand. Our tuition fund, as mentioned, this is also for excess special ed costs, as well as students of ours in the detention center. We cover tuition there for those students. And here, a levy reduction of a hundred thousand, primarily because we re-appropriated that amount of funds that was part of the permissive levy for excess special ed costs. And then you have adult education on the high school side, technology, very minimal change here, there. The Flex Fund is, is part of that opportunity fund from the state. That budget was more in the high school than it, than it was in the elementary. And then the, the debt service, and, and the debt service reductions are, in the levy, from a levy standpoint, is a hundred and seventy-three thousand. From a budget standpoint, it's seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And part of that is, is we've had some, some bonded indebtedness come off the, our books, and so we're, we'll continue to realize reductions in both the, the, the budgeted fund, as well as the levy. And then the billing reserve, the levy amount represents the, the permissive levy for billing reserve maintenance projects. And these projects relate back to the ones we talked about already for the fire sprinkling services, Sealy and the roof at, at Hellgate. Overall, the mills in the high school went down twelve point nine, and then the tax impact was a reduction in, of thirty-four eighty-three. So a two hundred thousand assessed value home, which sounds like doesn't exist in Missoula, would, would, in the elementary district, would realize a thirty-five dollar savings here, and then the, the sixty-some dollar savings on the elementary. It's about a ninety-nine dollar reduction in taxes. Page thirty-one, I'm backtracking a little, this is the graph we looked at. The high school is, is even a little more pronounced from a, an overall reduction in mills over time, going back to two thousand and six, which is interesting. And then, and then again, you see the, the sort of zero to a hundred when we passed those bonds in two thousand and fifteen in terms of our. 2015, in terms of our significant projects we needed to address in the school district, and we're able to fund those projects with the bonds that were passed, and now we're working the debt service. And again, about a quarter of the way through the payoff of those obligations. On page 32, the high school general fund projections are, you know, this is what we talked about last week. The only thing I'd point out is, one of the things I'd point out is, is we increased the overbase levy by 107,366. You'll see that in line two on the high school side. It was a non-voted increase in the overbase levy, which we can do by virtue of our reduction in other budgeted funds. And so we did this last year at 152,000, and we're doing it here at 107,000. We have similar adds to the general fund, including some staffing additions. And then we have similar additional added obligations for inflation on the high school side. And then, as pointed out by Chair Lorenson last week, the Title I impact and then the inter-local fund support are negatives because they're one-time-only funding source that's not used this year because it's, by its nature, it's one and done. So that would be the work comp credit, the Title I, and then the inter-local fund support. I think the last item is the revenue report, which was on the same sheet as the elementary on page 33. Those same three lines changed, beginning with the non-levy revenue, four lines down. That was not 30,000 as estimated, but the actual was 9,993. And so with that reduction in revenue of 20,000, well, that change, which is $20,007, that amount was picked up in the form of an increase in base levy of 5,994 and an increase of guaranteed tax base of 14,013. Overall, if you look at the base levy, that represents the local levy to our taxpayers. It went up 21,000, but the Flex increase, which is that overbase levy, went down 45,000. So it's a net decrease in levy in the general fund on the high school side, and then a larger reduction in the elementary side. Similar to the elementary side, but not as pronounced, we used A and B averaging for A and B count this past year, which reflected a 13 A and B reduction or student reduction. And that reduction was actually greater on the high school side, and I got to give you the number here. I think it was 27 students on the high school side. So 29 was the actual number. So with that, that's kind of the items I wanted to go over. And then the, as always, happy to discuss greater detail with any trustees at any time in terms of what makes up the full final budgets and these funds that we just went over.
Are there any trustee questions for Pat? Trustee Mercer?
So as I understood, last year with the inter-local, there was a net transfer of funds from the elementary to the high school. If I understand what you're saying, this time, there's no transfer at all. The numbers are accounting for the difference in what was done, but they're not movement numbers this year. Both sides just stayed in their corners.
Yeah, that's a really good point, because you would look at it, maybe think it is a transfer, but it's a correction because we start from the prior-year budget, and that prior-year budget doesn't have at its disposal these inter-local funds. So that's a real good clarification.
Any other trustee questions for Pat? Trustee Decker?
So when I look at the taxable value and how all of the changes in our budget end up impacting taxpayers, it's possible that people's taxes will stay the same or go up, even though our sort of budget is not actually increasing in a significant way because the taxable value of people's homes, it being Missoula in this particular era, has increased so much. And so when we talk about the, like, the decrease in mills, what that means, if I'm understanding right, is that we are not needing to increase the, the increase in people's home values is where that it might stay the same in terms of what impact they end up seeing on their tax bill. And it's possible that their tax bill will go down, because in fact, our budget has not really increased. So it's possible it'll go down. And if it doesn't, if it stays the same or goes up, it's not because our budget has gone up.
Yeah, it's a good point. And I think the best way to look at it is like on pages 30 and 37. And to look at just the change in the levy. So overall, our levy for these budgeted funds is going down, 650 and 297. And that happens irrespective of tax value. So we work purely on dollars with the school district, so that reduction would result in a reduction in taxes, even if tax values stay the same. And it does, because it's a true reduction in levies. The fact that the tax values go up means the $200,000 home in the prior year versus the $200,000 home this year, you know, they could, that could change. And so it makes the tax savings look more or look greater than it is, because you're comparing a 200,000 and a 200, which you need to do. But it doesn't take into account where that $200,000 home went. Did it go to 400,000 and that type of thing? But overall, it just is, it's just going to mean the relative decrease that you're going to get. But it will be a decrease as to these budgeted funds. Now, the other point you made is there's a lot of, there's a lot of other pieces, and some of the other pieces are what you pay for schools to the state that comes back around. And then the other piece is the county, that's retirement. The retirement fund has a countywide levy that's not reflected here, so the county does that calculation. And so there could be an increase there as well. So it's one of those ones where you don't kind of toot the horn too loudly, because there's a number of moving parts. But the bottom line is that we're levying less than we did the year before. And then if you look at the year before, we levied less then, too. So it's a high school, the levy last year went down 950,000, and then about 300 here. So we're 1,200,000 over two years. And then on the elementary, it's, you know, almost 900,000. So that's probably the number I'd focus on just from a tax impact, is we're certainly levying less.
Trustee Mercer?
If I'm correct, you wouldn't want to draw a trend line from that, because we've had sort of two unique years, federal support this year and weird things last year. So it's not like, from a more zoomed-out perspective, our budgets are going down, right? Is that...
I totally agree with you about that, because you're, there are anomalies, there are oddities. And the high school one was mostly tied to a previous bond just being paid off, so we didn't need the levy for that. And then you have, you know, just the enrollment oddity that's affecting our biggest fund. And so the, if enrollment comes around this year, then we build budgets for 2023 that will factor into, factor into play the base obligation for growing budgets, which is a local obligation. The other thing I didn't mention that's been happening for five years now, at least five, is the guaranteed tax base increase. So the state's picking up more of the obligation through guaranteed tax base, and that's all tied to relative property value around the state. And that was a big thing that MTSBA was involved in, and that has a direct reduction in base property taxes. So all things being equal, GTB is going up and base is going down anyway, because they're picking up a greater percentage, the state is. But back to your point, that's a good point.
Are there any other trustee questions for Pat? Seeing none. The administration recommends trustees approve adoption of all 21, 2021 and 2022 high school budgeted funds and the amounts to be raised by levy, tax levies, as presented on the attached motion and resolution 2022-2S. With trustee approval of all 2021 and 2022 high school budgeted funds, trustees authorize a high school overbase levy of 107,366, by virtue the preservation of at least 107,367 in reductions in non-voted tax levies as contemplated herein. Do we have a motion? Any trustee? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Decker. Trustee Ev. Garris, would you like to repeat the motion?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any trustee discussion about the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the motion? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Our next agenda item, we go into category Personnel Negotiations and Policy. So item one is to approve the personnel report. Dave Roth will explain that.
This is our monthly personnel report that reflects the hiring, the termination, resignations for the district. It's a typical report.
Okay, I had to read. And we're being advised by our attorney to adopt these separately. Are there any questions for Dave on either report before we move forward? So for an elementary recommendation, the administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided elementary personnel report. We have a motion from an elementary trustee. Moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Oldperson. Do we have any trustee discussion of the motion? Any public comment on the motion? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Elementary trustees? And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. The secondary recommendation, the administration recommends trustee approval of the items on the provided high school personnel report. Do we have a motion from any trustee? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee McDonald. Is there any trustee discussion on the motion? Any public comment on the motion? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Our next topic is to approve wage and salary increases for defined employees. Dave Roth will explain.
Hi. We have three employee groups, the noon duties, crossing guards, and bus aides. They're not part of a collective bargaining agreement. We just hire them as hourly employees. And our proposal is to raise their hourly rate from, which is currently at $10 now, to $11.50 an hour. So it'd be a $1.50 an hour raise across the board. It has been several years since we've given that group a raise. They don't work for negotiations with us. It's just something we think it's about time to do. The 11, the moving into 11.50 is actually quite deliberate. The reason it's not higher or it's at that spot was the MMCEO, their classified group starts at 11.81 an hour, so we have it fairly comparable to the starting wages in our classified union group. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any trustee questions for Dave? Trustee Decker?
Are there any folks who kind of stack those positions together?
Absolutely. In fact, we actually encourage that, especially for crossing guards and noon duties. When I was a principal, my crossing guard and noon duty was the same person, so you could put three jobs together, the morning, afternoon, and lunch.
And how many hours a day would that end up being once somebody was in all three of those?
They could get up, they could become those full-time. Usually, it's hour and a half. The total is about six hours, I think, if you put all three together. It's not typical that you have people do that, but we also sometimes have para educators that will work as a lunch or that are not full-time or part-time. So on our next agenda, and when we talk about that, I'll mention that we actually have pairs that have combined jobs that are in the other category that take them to a full-time status.
And what kind of positions would the MMCEO positions be that would be at the starting wage of about 11.80? What sorts of jobs would that be?
Those are the food services, cashiers, and kitchen helpers.
What would it take for someone who was stacked up to that level of full-time to have a position that would allow them access to the kind of bargaining unit if they're working that many hours for us at that low of a wage? Like, what would the, I'm just curious as to how that...
It's, I'm sorry, I need some feedback. It's not really the number of hours that would put them into the MMCEO. It's just one is a bargaining unit and one is not a collective bargaining group. So what that would take or require is trying to include those groups into the MMCEO.
So just to be clear, the food service workers you described, they're already part of MMCEO?
Correct, yes.
So they're in the bargaining unit. The three, the three groups here that you're recommending are not in the bargaining unit?
Correct.
But if I was a noon duty that also worked as a para, I would be in the bargaining unit, because the para is part of the bargaining unit.
Correct. However, we do have the differentiation in wages. So they're paid their hourly rate at the para rate, and then they're also paid the hourly rate at the noon duty rate, or whatever that might be.
And not being a labor, you know, negotiator, that would be something for those workers and/or the union to be having conversations about, about those positions? It just concerns me when we have folks that are working, you know, more than half-time for us at a non-living sort of wage.
Are there any other trustee questions for Dave? Trustee Mercer?
Is there a benefits, non-benefits thing, too? Or are all these things we've been talking about for the past five minutes without benefits?
There are not, the benefits that are outlined in our collective bargaining agreements are not the benefits that are allotted to those people in the noon duties, crossing guards. Now, if somebody were to have a combined position, then under the ACA, they would be eligible for insurance. They would be eligible for those insurance benefits.
But so when you're comparing the 11.50 to the 11.83, the 11.83 has benefits?
Yes, if they're a full-time employee. Plus, under the collective bargaining agreement, there are steps in, and there's steps in, there's a horizontal movement if you move up in positions, and there's also steps down. And, you know, this year, for example, within each of those lanes, there will be increase, an hourly increase per box plus lane movement down, or step down, rather.
Trustee Ev. Garris?
Out of curiosity, obviously, you say, ooh, man, sorry. The next one, you talk about how these positions are really hard to fill and retain. When we have these open positions, how do we fill them? Is it temporary employees? Is it just covering? If there is temporary employees, what's the cost behind that?
We hire these for the full-time, we hire these for the year. We don't hire them as temporary positions.
Are there any other trustee questions for Dave? Seeing none. Let's see. And we're again, we're going to vote on each of these separately. The administration recommends that trustees approve $1.50 per hour wage salary increase for employee groups defined above, effectively July 1, 2021. That's elementary recommendation. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Hobbins. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. That's elementary, thanks. And that's unanimous as to elementary trustees present. The high school recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the $1.50 per hour wage salary increase for the employee groups defined above, effective July 1, 2021. We have a motion? Moved by trustee McDonald, second by trustee Wake. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? So all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you. And our final item then, I think, is, again, with Dave Roth, to approve the hourly employee retention incentive. And that's elementary and secondary together. No, it's not. It's separate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. This actually gets to trustee Decker's point. One of the things I'm hoping to do is to, as you go out of the market, you see that every place is hiring and trying to recruit and retain employees at this point is very difficult. We have approximately 30 positions that fall into the both MMCEO, the crossing guard, noon duties. And so this proposal is to put some more money into their hands, hopefully keep them with us, and also use it as a recruitment incentive as well. The proposal is that for anybody working less than full-time, they would receive $250. Anybody that's working full-time would receive $500. If you look at the chart that is on page four of the report, about 70% of our employees are going to, would get the full benefit. Currently, of that 450 that are outlined there, about 96 are probationary employees. And what that means is that for all of our hourly employees under the MMCEO, including our noon duties and crossing guards, then under a six-month probationary period after they've done that, then what that means is they would have to be discharged for cause should we decide to remove them. The proposal, so what would happen with this is immediately you'd have several hundred would be eligible for this, another 96 would become eligible for this at some point during the course of the year. You'll note that I put a December 1 date on this. That was very purposeful as well because with a six-month probationary period, that would mean that anybody who was eligible for that would have it by June 1 of the following year, which would mean that anybody that we hired this year prior to December 1, which is generally when we do most of our hiring, would be eligible for it before the end of that school year. We're looking to fund this with ESER funds. Pat had contacted OPI as if this was to ask if this would be an appropriate use of ESER funds. And the response was it was, that we could use the funds for this. So with that, I guess I'd answer any questions. There's a lot to this, I guess.
Just clarify, Dave, somebody new to the district, I don't think you mentioned that, or somebody thinking about coming into the district.
Well, anybody that would come into the district that's hired prior to December 1 would be eligible for these. And so that's one of those things that when we do our recruitment and people we will be able to put out, that you become eligible for these amounts. Other districts have tried this. Kalispell had some success with it. There's a lot of local businesses also that are trying to do different things to bring people in. So any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any trustee questions for Dave? So my understanding is that existing employees will get the incentive as well as new employees?
Correct. We're not differentiating, there's 67 different job categories in our MMCEO currently with eight different lanes. I just, we're not differentiating the positions in this case. So every MMCEO member would be eligible for this.
Okay, are there any trustee questions? Okay, so we, the elementary recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the hourly employee retention incentive for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Do we have a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Decker. Any discussion on the motion? Trustee Decker?
I'm so glad that you're doing this. I think this is fantastic. I think this is critical. I think that folks like bus aides and noon duties have an enormous impact on our kids. And people who are caring and committed and develop relationships with kids during that really important social lunch hour are actually one of the most important parts of their day and can, it's like the weather. It's like, it can be a really bad weather day or it can be a really sunny, positive experience. And they have an enormous impact. And I feel like any chance we have to do something for them, this is a great use of ESER funding. So thank you for making this possible.
I appreciate you saying that. When I was a principal of the chief charlo, there were, I still remember one of my, the person who served at noon duty and crossing guard, the kids, I called him the cookie monster because he wore Sesame Street things. And he had a huge impact on the kids. And was something everybody looked forward to meeting and seeing every day at the crosswalk as well as the parents. So thanks for recognizing that.
Trustee Mercer?
I want to echo that, but also say, and I appreciate why you're doing it and the ways you're doing it now and ESER and all that. But in terms of the things for the cliff coming, it appears this to be the new labor market reality is that if you want these jobs done, you're gonna have to pay for them. And so when we're talking about the cliff three years from now, I think some of these are things that, I understand not building it into the wage, but this practice, I think, is probably for the future. And I also, I guess, would say for myself, and it seems like you're doing this, but if it turns out that this isn't enough to get the people you need who are qualified to be there, I anticipate you'll come back to us.
Thank you. Any other trustee comments on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? So all elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. The high school recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the hourly employee retention incentive for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Do we have a motion from any trustee? Trustee Hobbins, moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Wake. Is there any trustee discussion on the motion? Go ahead, trustee Jen?
We had also talked, I think, in our three-on-one trustee meeting with Dr. Watson that we also honor those employees that have stuck with it, stuck with MCPs even through COVID. Is there any other ideas or anything in a way to honor them and to recognize them other than lumping them in with the new employees?
I think this sends a powerful message. I've talked to the unions, the MMCEO, you know, throughout the year about this. And I think they're incredibly supportive of finally feeling that there's some recognition that their jobs are extremely important. To trustee Mercer's point, one of the things that's coming up next year is it's a negotiation year for all of our labor groups. And so we will have to be somewhat aggressive in how we look at this going into that. But I do think that this is an opportunity to say to the people that you're very valuable to us. We need you. And that you're important to the function of our district.
I would just add to that, one of the other things that we've heard for many years from our classified groups specifically is a lack of training opportunities, specifically support in training areas that they feel like they need help with, especially when they're working in the classrooms. Next week, we invested, using some ESER monies, you'll see it in our ESER budget, we invested in some training specifically designed for our classified employees. So I think it's more than just this incentive, but it's also showing support for something they've been asking for for quite a few years.
Are there any other trustee comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. I guess I'll call for public comment because we have, do you have any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, we're adjourned.